I thumb through the magazine. Stand over with things we've already done.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to your republic, for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, pretty and just.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively.
Here.
Mr. Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Burris.
Here.
Ms. Young. We have a call.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less, and I don't see anyone in the room tonight. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conferences. Is there anyone tonight more?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of documents and items, action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated June 25th through 2024 through July 8th, 2024. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, June 24, 2024. Permit report, June 2024. Fire report, June 2024. Budget report, May 2024. Police report, May 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions of city staff before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. Business news. Welcome to Ivana Page, who has opened a music studio at 208 West Main Street in downtown Monticello. Ivana will be offering piano, vocal, and guitar lessons. Upcoming events. The Smoke and Octane BBQ Competition and Sundowner's Car Show is scheduled for next Friday and Saturday on Pepson Hill. There will also be a mini golf and bags tournament, live music, and vendors. All proceeds will benefit the Monticello Recreation Foundation. Don't forget the Monticello Farmers Market on Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in downtown Monticello. Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2024-33, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Bucks Pond Properties LLC concerning the property located at 219 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time of year where we review, or the review committee reviews, the applications for the Fall Building Improvement Grant Program. They have recommended five grants to come before you guys, and we'll go through each one. The first one is for the former Fieldhouse property at 219 West Washington. The owners have done substantial renovation in the upper story. They converted three efficiency apartments to two studio apartments. They are completely gutting the interior, putting in new HVAC, moving the kitchen, and just doing a phenomenal amount of work. And so what they would like to do as part of this grant program is to basically put a stucco facade on the property. If you're into historic preservation, you know stucco is not historic, but neither is that brick yellow covering that's on it right now. So we weren't, and it's failing. So we're not too upset about them making it look nicer. That building is about 120 years old, so if they're putting the windows back in on the west side, it's just going to be phenomenal once it's done. As the review committee discussed and decided to recommend 50% of the grant match up to $10,000 for this property.
Any questions or comments for Kelly? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-33? Is there a second?
Second.
Once more, any comments, questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
And Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-34. An ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Frank and Karen Hardeman concerning the property located at 213 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. We like to give reference to this property as the one that kind of first started all the facade renovations in our downtown. If you remember about eight or nine years ago, it was twin spaces that had one of the shingled awnings on it, and the owner and the tenant at the time removed the awnings, exposed the storefront windows, removed the drop ceiling, and it has a gorgeous tin ceiling in there now that was original that they were able to paint. The owners would like to install signage in the alley, expand the usable space on the first floor. It's currently occupying about 60% of that first floor space, and the salon has an opportunity to expand further, but that back part actually needs to be refurbished with some tuck pointing and floor repair and some door replacement where the door is failing, and then also doing some tuck pointing along the alleyway. So the estimated project cost is $17,809, and the committee recommended 50% of the total cost of the materials, because we don't fund the labor if the owner's doing the labor herself or herself, up to $6,063.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Is this part of rebuilding that alley?
I'm sorry.
Like part of starting to rebuild that alley?
Um, it's not actually.
Be usable instead of scary.
Well, the alley is actually the city alley, but one of their plans is to put a new door in so that could be accessible by customers.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-34?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Once again, any comments or questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please, Jill.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
And Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-35, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Hair of the Dog Pet Grooming Salon and Academy LLC concerning the property located at 1052 South Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. As you remember, we expanded the business district last year, so now we can increase the area that this program can help. Tracy Kaufman, which owns Hair of the Dog Pet Grooming Salon and Academy LLC, has a brand-new road on the north side of her building, and she would love to have an entrance off of that side as opposed to having to walk all the way back around to where it was. So she is requesting funding or reimbursement for construction of that new entryway, and then it'll have a little roof as well. Estimated project cost is $6,500, and the grant recommended reimbursement is 50% of the total cost, up to $3250. And I'm sorry, memo says of materials, it's not of materials, it's of the entire thing.
Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-35?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Again, I'll ask one more time. Hearing or seeing none, please, roll call.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
And Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-36, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Brackett &amp; Company Incorporated concerning the property located at 216 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly.
Thank you. As many of you know, Grayson May closed at the end of June, and Brackett &amp; Company is a new business going into that space. So they have a couple of things they'd like to do, increase the signage or improve the signage, upgrade the interior lighting, and then they requested construction of a counter, and then the back courtyard area, they would like to have patio installed and landscaping done. It's kind of a weedy mess right now with everything that, all the construction that happened in that area. The total project cost is estimated at $22,024. The grant, committee recommended reimbursement of 50% of the total cost, not including the counter construction installation, up to $8,912. And the reason the counter was not included is items that are specific to the operation of a business like that, meaning if the business closes, that will probably go along with it. Those aren't eligible.
Okay. Comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-36?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments again, questions? Roll call, please, Jill.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks. Ordinance 2024-37, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and The Brown Bag Incorporated concerning the property located at 212 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly.
Thank you. The Brown Bag actually received a grant in the spring, so a few months ago, from everyone for 50% of the total cost, up to $15,000. So we exceeded the $10,000 then. They actually ended up surrendering that grant back because there was more work that needed to be done, substantially more that would need to be addressed. We have some serious structural masonry issues, as you've seen. I mean, it's hard to miss, right? They removed the back part of that building, and now it's all exposed, and it really needs to be sealed in and buttoned up, or it's just going to deteriorate more. The other kind of factor that weighed into, as you noticed, 50% up to $40,000, a substantially increase, is what we normally have done. The applicant doesn't own the building. Obviously, she's a tenant. That's not normally a deal breaker. However, the owners of the building are multiple entities, not all of which are willing to put skin in the game. And given that, the committee felt this was a structural and soon-to-be safety issue if we don't do something, they are really pushing for recommending that cap at a higher level to get it done, to get it safe, because that's obviously a longstanding business. We want to see it continue. It's an anchor in the downtown, and it's frankly an eyesore, which the business will agree to. She just wants it fixed. So The Brown Bag, which is the tenant, would like to have the tuck pointing and masonry done on the north and the west exterior walls, so what we all see. And then if you go inside where Pisvino used to be, there's that brick wall that is severely bowed that would be rebuilt, shored up and rebuilt. And then all the windows and their frames on the west wall for the upstairs apartment are rotting, water's infiltrating. It's just not a good situation. So this was an opportunity after probably over an hour of discussion. Would you agree? You and I sat in on, this was an opportunity for the city to kind of step in, help a business that had been here for almost, has been here for almost 50 years, and at the end of the day, get a building that's safer and not going to get worse in shape. The only other thing I want to mention on this is there will be no extensions on this, period. That was written into the redevelopment agreement. That's a huge chunk of this program funding. We don't want to roll it over into the next year and have it eat up almost 30% of our funding for next year. So I know it's a big ask, but I'm pretty sure the review committee feels very, very strongly, since they all were very supportive of this, and you can add anything if there's any other questions. But you sat in on that, too.
There was a lot of discussion on this in particular because of the amount of grant. But as Kelly mentioned, you know, it's kind of some life safety issues, structural issues for this building in particular.
And then to remind you, this is a reimbursed grant. So they, there's a lot of moving parts in here. The bank isn't going to loan the money unless they know this is approved, but they know they'll get this big chunk. She's also lined up other sources of funding to help pay for the remainder that isn't going to be this. She's going to have to secure the loan first to get this done, and then this portion will be reimbursed once the work is done. So she's got a very short window, but supposedly things are lining up, and she's got her contractors ready to go. It'll be done by November 30th. Yeah, absolutely.
So if we give the $40,000, is that the end of the grant money that we have for all the businesses for the year?
For this semester, or this semester, I missed. This round, that is all that the grant committee wanted to recommend approval. We've had 11 applications. Some were, actually, they were all great projects. Some were unfortunately not eligible because they already started on the project. Some, the grant committee or review committee felt that they, maybe it wasn't appropriate use of public funds to do these particular things. So, you know, that's part of the process. They weigh out based on criteria and, yeah.
I have another question.
Sure.
So who funded the other construction projects that they've had in that specific area for the last several years?
For that building?
Yeah.
They've done it personally. And again, you have an entity of multiple peoples that owns the building, which will change and has changed, especially in the last 10 to 15 years. And then The Brown Bag itself rents the building for the restaurant use.
So are you saying that this isn't going to happen unless we pony up the $40,000?
I am pretty confident. We have spent a lot of, I will say, hours, being Chamber, myself, and a couple other individuals, structural engineers, bankers, we put a lot of time into figuring out how we can make this happen, because it is legitimate concern, and it's not, take the visibility or the safety side out of it, that's not the best thing you want to see when you're driving on your main drag through town.
It did catch my attention, though, when I opened this up and saw 40 grand, which I don't know, have we ever given out more than 10?
Yes, we've done 215s. Last spring. One right next door, which was a similar issue. So, yeah, it's one of those things, nobody's ever asked for more. Actually, nobody has ever asked for more than $10,000 from an application side. The review committee has recommended, look, you are going to have more in that you don't know about, so they've recommended to go above that. And it's always been written in the policy that the council has the authority to go above the $10,000.
I mean, given that it's been around for 50 years, you can't just let it go.
Well, I think at the, I think at the end of the day, you're going to have a better building, and that's the whole intent of this grant, is it doesn't matter who's occupying it now, it doesn't matter what type of business it is, at the end of the day, we're going to have a better building. So.
That the owners don't want to spend the money on.
I think we're past "don't want to," and now they can't. They're very, because again, you have five different individuals that own the building. So what bank, when you're not getting all five of them to sign up on a loan, you're not going to find a bank that's going to leverage that when, you know, it's just a really tricky situation.
Well, so first off, I want to say thank you for all the work that you do on this, because I think this program is amazing. It's fantastic. It's a lot of wonderful improvements to the town. This is like staple building in Monticello, and it's one that has been deteriorating for years and has probably been on people's watch list for years. The fact that it's finally moving forward is fantastic. So I think it's well past time to get after this building and the structural stuff, and so, you know, I think that's what, that's what we have this discretion for, is this is a bigger project. It is one that is not, it's not, hey, I want to look prettier, I want, you know, I want this or that. This is incorporating safety and making sure that that building's around for another 200 years by taking the time now to address it, so.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-37?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
No.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
No.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we should be having an audit presentation from our accountant, Steve Grony. Is he available?
I am here.
Good deal.
Proceed. All right. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Once again, MCK truly does appreciate being selected as the auditors for the city. This year, our reports for the year ended December 31, 2023. Our audit opinion is the same as in the prior years. It says that everything looks good. There's one bit of accounting which is in regards to an other post-retirement employee benefit plan that maybe isn't disclosed exactly correctly because you guys have not gone out and gotten an actuary to do all the computations. Well, that's pretty smart of you and saves you a lot of money. So besides that, our report says everything looks good. We have a second report that goes with the audit that is in regards to the fact that your audit is prepared under government auditing standards, is performed under government auditing standards. That report is the same as in prior years. It says that we have found one weakness in internal controls, which is simply the fact that nobody currently employed by or hired otherwise by the city can prepare full accounting or full financial statements with all required disclosures. You guys ask us to do that instead, so we show it as a weakness, but it's also another pretty smart move and a good money-saving decision. You've had that forever. 95, 99% probably of our clients who do audits have that same weakness in their report. So let's get to the good news, which is, as you know, there's a couple different sets of financial statements in here. The first one I want to go over is on page seven, if you have that, and this is called the Statement of Net Position. This is the city's modified cash basis balance sheet. So looking at that, this is the total column. Total assets for this year, at the end of this year, are $45.7 million. The prior year was around, was $43 million, so it's up a little over $2 million this year. Liabilities for the year are $14.2 million, which is actually down from $14.9 in the prior year. Main reasons for that is simply that in 2023, you had no debt issuances, but you did, of course, have scheduled paydowns on debt. So that's why the liabilities went down. And so that brings us down to net position for the city, which is a very strong $31.5 million, which is up $3 million from last year at $28.4 million. If you want to turn to page 11, page 11 of the report shows what you guys are probably used to seeing more than some of the other reports in here, which is fund-by-fund income and revenue, or revenue and expense statements. So again, we'll kind of focus on the total columns here. Total revenues received, these are, I'm sorry, these are all government funds, so this is not going to include water and sewer. We'll see that in a second. So $9.85 million in revenue as compared to $10.65 million last year. That's down $800,000 and is exactly the same amount of the decline in personal property replacement taxes received in 2023. Big increases the past couple of years before this, and they're kind of getting back down still and very inflated to where they were five years ago, but good numbers. Expenditures for the year, about $7.9 million, which is up $1.4 million from last year, and that's 100% all on that capital outlay line. There was just simply more projects done and paid out in 2023 as compared to 2022. That brings you down to the net change in fund balances, far right, third lineup, of just under $2 million for the year, and leaving total fund balances for governmental funds at about $18.7 million. Very strong there. Let's jump over to page 14 real quick. This is going to be the, what we call the proprietary funds, which are the water and sewer funds. Total revenues there are a little over $3 million as compared to $2.4 million last year. That's due to a hundred, about $100,000 increase in the sewerage side, which is the whole rate increase that happens, has happened many of the past years. And then the waterworks is the big increase, but as you guys know, that's due to the addition of the refuse and the refuse and recycling program. So up, so that's up. And if you go down to operating expenses, that too is up about $550,000, which again is mostly due to the addition of the refuse and recycling program. So down at the bottom, bottom right, third lineup, you'll see that the change in net position is a positive $362,000, which again, never, it's always nice to see the funds increasing in size to help with future projects and maintenance. So move over to page 18. Page 18, it says a fiduciary fund, but what this is, is this is the police pension fund. And I'll mention this again in a few minutes, a little bit different information. But if you look on here, you'll see that the additions for the year are employee contributions and employer contributions. That employer contribution amount of $513 is up from $466 last year. Both of the years had an extra $250,000 payment, which has really helped, helped this fund get built up into something that is a lot, lot better looking and a lot more sustainable. Deductions for the year, payments out, which are payments out, $193,000, and that's against $155 in the prior year. So in the end, the fund increased in '23 about, oh, just shy of $400,000 to $2.4 million. So going from that, we'll jump, jump kind of over, stay in the whole pension plan realm here. If you want to jump over to pages, the IMRF note five is pages 29 to 31. I think the main thing to show here is on page 31, which, if you look at that, it will show you what the actuaries have computed as the few, as the, as of today, what the pension liability for all the people who have been in these plans is, and what the net position is of your plan at this moment. And you'll see on the regular side, the plan is 96.75% funded, which on these types of plans is phenomenal and really, a really good number to see. Last year, that number was 94%. For the SLEP plan, it is 76% funded, which is actually down from 85% funded in the prior year. So that's where those stand. And if you go to the police pension fund, I know we just went over that, but a thing to note on page 32, kind of in the upper third, it'll say percent funded. That plan is now shown at 63.7% funded. I can remember back when it was below 30%, and in the prior year, it was 42%. So with some good returns on the investments with high interest rates and with the additional contribution, at the end of the, at the end of the 2000, that's, this is, I'm sorry, this is the end of the '22 year, because we only had that report, so you were up to 63.7. So I'll have to assume with the way the market went in '23, things will be even better now for that fund. So all good news there. And I'm not going to go over the details here, but note eight will show you all your long-term liabilities, your debt, and show you again, like I said earlier, no additions, just some repayments. Note 10 to the financial statements goes over your restricted fund balances. So restricted and committed fund balances. What that means, committed means that the, is that the council has at some point passed legis, passed a motion, a resolution to say, hey, we're going to put this money aside for this. So going from that, we'll jump, jump kind of over, stay in the whole pension plan realm here. If you want to jump over to pages, the IMRF note five is pages 29 to 31. I think the main thing to show here is on page 31, which, if you look at that, it will show you what the actuaries have computed as of today, what the pension liability for all the people who have been in these plans is, and what the net position is of your plan at this moment. And you'll see on the regular side, the plan is 96.75% funded, which on these types of plans is phenomenal and really, a really good number to see. Last year, that number was 94%. For the SLEP plan, it is 76% funded, which is actually down from 85% funded in the prior year. So that's where those stand. And if you go to the police pension fund, I know we just went over that, but a thing to note on page 32, kind of in the upper third, it'll say percent funded. That plan is now shown at 63.7% funded. I can remember back when it was below 30%, and in the prior year, it was 42%. So with some good returns on the investments with high interest rates and with the additional contribution, at the end of the, at the end of the 2000, that's, this is, I'm sorry, this is the end of the '22 year, because we only had that report, so you were up to 63.7%. So I'll have to assume with the way the market went in '23, things will be even better now for that fund. So all good news there. And I'm not going to go over the details here, but note eight will show you all your long-term liabilities, your debt, and show you again, like I said earlier, no additions, just some repayments. Note 10 to the financial statements goes over your restricted fund balances. So restricted and committed fund balances. What that means, committed means that, is that the council has at some point passed a motion, a resolution, to say, hey, we're going to put this money aside for this. Those things stand until either used or until the council decides to undo it. That is something you can undo. So at the end of this year, you can see at the bottom of page 36, there was just shy of $2 million in committed funds. $360,000 is within the working cash fund, money set aside in a prior year for just, you know, need. The capital project, the cap, there was a capital project fund set up in the general fund, similar to that, that's now $472,000. There's funds that have been committed for Oberheim that were $382,000, and then there's still video gaming revenue available or committed at the end of the year of $753,000. So almost shy of $2 million. Again, I'm not going to get in, it's up to you guys what you plan to do with that. It's building up pretty strong, so it's good to have that set aside, but obviously, that can change if ever need be. Now, on the next page, you'll see restricted fund balances. These are things that are not something that you can just change, but things that you need to kind of know about. The general fund still had, at the end of the year, $59,000 of unspent ARPA funds. There was $20,900 in amounts that are required to be set aside for future debt payments. There is almost four, over $4.5 million that is in your motor fuel tax fund that is to be used for road and bridge construction and improvements. And then tax revenue for the business district was just shy of a million. So again, a lot of good stuff there. Finally, note 12, which is on page 38, that's where we list any material subsequent events that either might affect the financial statements we're presenting or just might be of an importance to be included. And the city believed that we should put in there just a quick note about the new debt that was issued in early 2024, and I completely agree with that being something that should be reported. So that way, someone reading these financials knows that, hey, after year-end, something, there was some new debt added. So. Final thing, we have one other, we have one other letter that we send out. It's called the communications to those charged with governance. You should have that, and it basically goes over pretty much what I just said. So at this point, I'll just ask, are there any questions about the financial statements or our audit?
Questions?
If not, one thing I'd like to add, you know, I always, I always love working with the team there at the city. Everybody gets us things. They usually have things ready, completely ready for us when we get there, and anytime we have questions, we get quick responses. Everyone's involved, but mainly Mara there on that one. And then I just want to point, to point out, do a little plug, that I am a board member of the Heart of Illinois Community Foundation. And as a, as a person that has had an office in Monticello for my 31 years and always loved Monticello, including the Brown Bag, I was super excited when we recently, our foundation kind of took Puyatt County under our wings. And hopefully, you have seen, we're putting a lot of money out into Puyatt County to help the nonprofits over there, and Kristen Wright's been great to work with. So I hope when you guys get talked to by the, by the nonprofits in and around town that you mention us and have them contact Kristen, because, boy, we've sure, luckily, we've sure got a lot of money to give out, and I'd love to give it to you guys, so.
Comments? Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
All your persons' reports. Eric?
Randall?
Oh, wait, hold on. I might have to figure out how to get rid of some little raccoons in my yard. But besides that, no.
No.
Randall?
Give you a couple.
They make great pets if you can catch them.
No.
I had one when I was a kid. I loved that animal.
Nothing major, although I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this, but I've noticed in my, the nice part about it, having a golf cart, is you can cruise around at a very low speed and see a lot of things that you wouldn't see in your car. But I've noticed in the subdivision north of me there, there've been a number of places on those concrete streets quite outlined for repair, which they are in our need of repair. Is there a time schedule for that, or is that something, I mean?
I don't work, I don't, I don't have a time schedule. I know the guys did some out in Apple Tree earlier this year. I don't know when they're going to get to those over there in Rich Point.
Several of them marked off. Didn't know if you had any time on them or not, so. Maybe before winter. We'll see. Thank you.
You've got time now. You should be volunteering for stuff.
Get my own jack, get my own jackhammer and hack it on start it, I guess. School traffic will start back up to there quicker than we.
Yep.
Oh, and then we won't be able to repair them once school starts, because it's just too much. So maybe, maybe we can get something done prior to that. That's all I have.
Thanks. Tom Piercy?
Nothing. Thank you.
Nothing tonight?
Thank you.
Tom?
Nothing? Nothing tonight? Call, sir?
No, sir. Whoa.
Whoa.
That was a walk in the dark. I think it must be the police chief's report. Rob? Tell us all about your experiences last week. Unless you don't want to. That's what we do.
For July 3rd and the prep leading up to that, it supplies, the city donates, I think, $6,000 to that. In man hours, or I'm sorry, patrol hours for setup of the no parking areas, irrigate, stuff like that, supplies. The city's in for just under $2,400. So that's what we spent roughly in a few meetings and then set up on the first, second, and third, and then takedown. We are accepting applications for about another week. We have one more opening left. And then some good news on our flock cameras. You did catch two stolen vehicles about the last month. These are not, what we have to tell people is these are not, it's not a magic wand. If you tell me that a white car hit you, was involved in a hit and run or something like that, we can type in white car, but we're going to get over a one-hour period, probably about 250 matches, and that's just on our. Usually make model helps. We caught a few people stealing from Dollar General that way. And then a few times, if they don't drive past the flock cameras, they stay in town, that's not activated. So again, we try to tell people it's not a catch-all. It's just a tool like anything else we use, so.
That's it. Thanks for your efforts. That third, that's a, that's a little stressful. I understand that, so. Fire chief's report. John?
Mr. Mayor, last month, we ran 49 calls. So halfway through the year, we're at 306 calls. We had some good training last month. We did pump operations. Everybody got to take the trucks out and get some water out of it. Also, what we have to do once a year is fire safety vehicle operations training. We have to be certified to be able to drive the trucks. We did that the second week. And the third week, we got a tour of the railroad museum, which was pretty interesting. I'd never seen the whole complex, but if you haven't, it is pretty spectacular. Got some really neat stuff out there. And it's great to be out there, because if we ever have a fire in one of those buildings, now we know what to expect. We would never know what to expect going into that. So pretty amazing place. If you've never been out there, check it out. It's pretty cool. And then a couple of things we did, we filled water d. I filled twice last month, so. Quite a month, but it is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Your reports are always appreciated, gentlemen. Mr. Summers, city administrator?
I have nothing tonight.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Is there a second? If I can call it a favor, I, I oppose. See you in two weeks.